We don't really need to record right now.
Can you hear me now? Okay. If not, just give me, let me, let me know something. Okay, are there any announcements? None. Public participation, public comments are limited to three minutes. Public comments related to items on the agenda. Does anyone have anything? And I think we're going to try and work this more like a work session where we'll have time for questions and answers. Correct? So if we can just leave that and then anyone have any normal public comments that they'd like to bring to the board while we're here in session? Okay, seeing none, I see no hands on Zoom. We'll move right into new business and this is presentation on St. Anthony's. We're going to get an update on the current status and future projects. And this will be presented by our manager Ramsey Reiner and Mike Buck.
Okay, um, forgive me because I'm very nervous, but we have been practicing this for, well, we talk about it all the time. So hopefully this makes sense. The first thing I'd like to do is just introduce Mike to talk about what's happened at St. Anthony's so far and the current state of affairs. Just to give an update on that. So Mike, you want to go for it?
Hello, everyone again, my name is Mike Buck. I'm the Parks and Open Space Superintendent. Thank you all for being here this evening. So we're going to go through our summary of actions so far. We're going to talk about the work that's been completed. We're going to talk about some work that is a focus for us by the end of summer 2022. And kind of look at beyond, beyond that for our next steps. So as I go through this list, and again, I know there's a lot of passion and energy around St. Anthony's and there's probably been a lot of questions. So we'll just try to save those to the end. If I'm unclear about something, please speak up and I'll do my best to clarify. So so far we have the historic White House. We have new tenants in place. The caretakers will be moved in by the end of March. They've already started that process. Tree removal is currently in progress. So works identified approximately 500 trees that are hazards throughout the park. Street lighting, proceed for streetlights to mapped out. Balls have been, it's an interesting echo. So we're participating in the Pico buyback program. So Pico is replacing all the existing bulbs within the streetlights and the parking lights up near the amphitheater and the pool. We have a contract, I should say that the theme here is we're focusing on maintenance of the park, infrastructure improvements and safety. So all these things tie into those three things. So our landscaping contract with Deerfield is in the process of being renegotiated again to maintain the, to do field mowing, to do, finish cutting through the main areas of the park. We have had a few instances where there's been trespassing on the park in the past couple of months. So we stepped up our presence and police surveillance. I've been touring the park with a higher rate of frequency as well. Streets on have been ordered as a part of a speed study. There's a site distance evaluation which was completed. We do have a pond contract in place. That's a yearly contract to, to reduce levels of green and blue algae in the ponds, keep those under control. And then our maintenance garage leases, again, one of those is tied to Deerfield. The other is a long time tenant whose lease will be ended, is ending at the end of May. And that space is going to be repurposed for township park equipment in the short term. And then the last part here, which is going to influence some of the things we're trying to get done by the end of this summer. It's a splash update. So Splash is our partner with the pool over the park. They, there were plans to open up last Memorial Day that was fell through. So where we're at right now is that they have all of the building permits approved. They still need the permitting for the pool, but with the permits for the buildings approved, part of their vision is that they're going to be open by the end of this summer. So that being said, we'll need to accelerate some of these things that again are maintenance, infrastructure, public safety, specifically as it relates to the corridor that runs to the park from to the pool and back. So that's what I had there. Yeah. Yeah, so there'll be some additional detailing section. I just want to give a quick overview. Yeah, well, try to save everything to the end. If, if I speak and it comes out as like verbal spaghetti, let, let me know. I'll repeat myself and then we'll try to save questions for the end. So here we have the White House. It's the historic White House. It's in the centrally located in the park, scary basement, beautiful property. So like I said, the tenants are moving in. As part of that process of moving them in, we have made some repairs to the house and there will be some future repairs that need to be completed. So we replaced the roof. We serviced the HVAC, cleaned out the beds. We've done some plumbing work, replaced an oil tank and done interior painting in the home. So those are kind of like the bare essentials to get folks moved in. And then we still have to repair the, the fascia and the sopit of the area around the roof are like Swiss cheese from like pests. We need to repair those. And then we also need to replace all the windows. So those are things that I'm in the process of getting bids for and will be on track to complete those by the end of the summer. And a part again tying into the maintenance with maintenance being a big focus. We want to maintain what's there now so it doesn't deteriorate any further than it is as we move through the different phases. Part of their lease is also caretaker agreement. So in conjunction with what Deerfield will be providing in terms of landscaping maintenance, the tenants will also be helping to maintain different areas of the park, like the mini golf area, some areas around the amphitheater that have been cleared, et cetera. All right. Our tree removal, like I said, we started off with public works identifying over 500 hazard trees. So when we say hazard trees, it's like the trees that are rotted out from the inside that, you know, could be those, the last thing we want to see is someone's walk through the park and get hit by. But they, Kenny and his team have removed over 100 of those trees. We've partnered with a contractor to remove some of the trees along that lane to speed up the process and delight in the workload on public works. They've also, because of the specialized equipment they have, have addressed some of the problem trees that are like right up against buildings that otherwise it'd be hard to get or we'd have to rent equipment for. It's not everything happened with the trees. Yeah, and then we, we have about 20 to 30 more trees along the drive that we're going to remove prior to the pool opening. Yes. Yeah.
I know that we had outsourced some of that tree work.
Right.
Not public works. Did that start yet?
So that's almost completed actually. Yeah, so they're there wrapping that up today. If you didn't see them today during your drive through, they were there. Okay. Yeah, so they were wrapping things up. I think the last thing they have, they took down the last few trees today and then they need to go through and grind the stumps and then clean up the woodchips and they'll be done. So probably by next week, they'll be completely out of there or even by the end of this week.
And then Kenny, you guys have been handling like a lot of it, right? The trees. I know there is a lot. The, the tree work, the other.
Yeah, so and outside of that focus on the hazard trees that we know about, part of Deerfield's contract is to, to remove any of those like one off trees that fall like during a storm and block the roads.
We should, we should also mention, you know, these are all trees that are safety hazards and moving forward, we're all aware that we're going to be replanting and the environmental concerns are, you know, a priority of ours. These are just, this isn't anything cosmetic. This is just, we don't want to kill anyone at this point.
Yeah.
Some of them are like, wow, they're just rotten.
Yeah.
They're quite fallen over in any path form, they're half up, half down.
Right.
Leaning on other trees.
Yeah. Really, yeah. A little scary. A lot of unknowns there.
Trailers.
Uh, so that brings us to our next scary thing is electricity and lighting in the park. So what you see here is these are all of the, all the panels, the, the breakers and the timers that tie into the, the street lighting. And I know it's a street lighting up there, but also lights in the parking lot as well. So you can see like in this picture here, like these breaker boxes all rusted out. The switches rusted, we have exposed wires and this is where the timer's at. So this is where the electricity comes into the park, into that stable area. And then it feeds into this, which is in front of the White House. And then it feeds into this area, which that's a rat nest right there. And the more exposed wires right outside of the pool and, and then it ends up and this is street, streetlight specifically ends up here. And this is what controls, I think, the remaining, some of the streetlights near the parking lot and then the parking lot lights themselves. So we are in the process right now, again, we've done the, participating in the Pico buyback program, but just because they, they replaced the light, doesn't mean the fixture is going to work. And that's as soon as they, they plug in the new light bulb, they check a box and they leave. So these are the things we have to address after they've come and replaced the lights. So they have done all the streetlights. We're still waiting on the, the Bellas replacement LEDs for the parking lights, which are up here.
Mike, can I add something?
Yeah, absolutely.
There's really no surprises to me on a lot of the things that are there. Basically, everything that you're looking at on the screen has been repurposed. It was used somewhere else and then they used it second. So I mean, that, we knew that going into, it's not a surprise.
Right, and then I guess we should also say that after all these repurposed things were used or upcycled for the park, there really wasn't much maintenance that was done. And then I think in 2013 or 2014, the, the original tenant just kind of checked out. They stopped doing any maintenance and which is, you know, led to further deterioration of the park. Okay, so here we get to culvert and some stream erosion repairs. So on the map, it's in this area. So if we're looking at folks are be, oh, sorry, folks are going to be coming in here from Route seven, snaking through the park. And this is the first intersection they get to. So there's a drain pipe here that's failing, which is leading to a sinkhole that's filling or that's growing here. So we need to excavate that area, refill the pipe, rebuild this retention wall. And then that's on the upstream side and the downstream side opposite of that. You can see while the pipe isn't failing, the retention wall is like built out of leftover pieces of I-95 and hasn't, hasn't really held up that well. So that's, that, that section, the one pipe that goes through the intersection. Then you have another drain pipe that comes from the stable, which is this area. So one pipe runs this way, the other pipe runs this way and they both feed into that same downstream area. There's been stormwater runoff that's compromised this, this hill and led to severe erosion and pipe damage. And this is like less than a foot from the road right now. So we, again, in the process of getting some proposals to get that repaired, I've got two in, I'm hoping to get one more, but that's definitely a priority. That is right below Route seven. And Stan, thank you for saying that because this is a great opportunity to also mention that, you know, as we come across it, through each phase in the park, we're going to be focusing on, you know, restoring or enhancing the waterways, the watershed in that area to prevent or try to mitigate some of these issues moving forward, which will not only help obviously St. Anthony's, but will make us good neighbors to those surrounding communities to kind of reduce stormwater that comes in and all the, the sedimentation that comes with it. And again, there's no one, one clean answer to that, but it's all, as we go through the park, we'll continue to kind of build on those, those measures. Yeah, you have to, yes, you, in order to get to anything in the park right now, you have to drive over that intersection.
Strong enough to hold traffic during summer as well. You know, people being in access.
Yeah, so they, they, they think the repairs will take about a week. And yeah, while they're working on the intersection, there's really not going to be, the park's going to be closed because that intersection is going to be blocked off. And as it stands right now, I don't know if Kenny could chime in. I don't know about like structural integrity of the road and what the concerns are for driving on it and its current state. I mean, it seems to be fine, but I, I'm not an expert.
But Mike is in the process of getting quotes so that this, like, our biggest goal is to get the road open for Splash, knowing that they're planning on opening Memorial Day. So this is the newest priority.
Yeah, and to prevent, to prevent any more damage that might, you know, encroach on the road.
Any work on that road would need to be like after later.
We would, we would try and get it done like sooner than later, like before.
Yeah, yeah, this would be out of everything, probably like our number one priority on like infrastructure repairs. So yeah, that's why, why I kind of said that the vision is to be open with summer 2022. Well, we, that's the vision. Yeah, so we don't, we don't, we don't know if, if they're going to be open then or not, but we're planning on them being open. So we're working, we're working towards that.
Quick question on the repairs with culverts. That would be considered a street crossing. I'm sure there's some sort of permitting that's going to be needed to repair that. Are we going to, have we started that process?
Well, Mike's been meeting with Cedarville on park, park, like general park improvement. So they'll be included on this. The first was that he was getting a quote just to see, first we thought it would be a snap tight situation. Now we're realizing there's a lot more going on. So yeah, that I will definitely be following a permitting process, but has it been started? No.
So the concern there would be timing. I've been around here for quite some time. I've not seen any bridges get permitted in less than a year. This is a simple street crossing. That's a huge concern.
Okay. Yeah, well, I'll work on getting specific answers to that question over the coming days.
That's going to be here Friday, right?
Yeah, Beth will be our engineer from Cedarville will be here Friday so we can talk about that.
It could go a lot quicker because it's, it's not a public road. However, it is a tributary, so it's considered wetland. I think the process is similar. Okay, it, it honestly, it's a moving park.
Yeah.
And that could be, I mean, possibly use for emergency care permit. But again, that should be.
Thank you. All right, so that leads us into this slide of safety hazards throughout the park and some people.
Someone wants to know why I've been saying we can't have kids running around. This will be a great example.
Yeah, right. When I mentioned in the, in the newsletter that I didn't want anyone sneaking in and falling in a hole and dying. It was kind of, kind of humorous, but like I wasn't kidding. It's, if, if you wander out to the wrong area, like over here, there, the park is full of these underground junction boxes like this. And if you don't know they're there, they look like this and I've spray painted, you know, just some hazard paint on there so you can identify it better. But if you don't see that, they're all dry rotty, you fall through and you end up in this hole. It's like a junction for utilities, electricity. There's one of them has water that's running through it. And there are because of like stormwater and drainage issues, sinkholes like this, all over the park, hidden little culverts. I found this gem, this zombie defense weapon la, late last week. Just again, just like laying in the park. So I go, when we're, when we're talking about trails and even trails being like, it's like low hanging fruit or seeming like low hanging fruit. We've got to go through and take care of all these things before we even talk about trails, right? So that in mind, that's why as, as the park opens up, we're going to be focusing on the Jersey Berry, Jersey barriers already in place. So we'll be closing off access to drivable sections of the park that aren't closed. Well, no trusting, no trespassing signs, do not enter signs. We'll continue to use police to surveil, surveil the property. And then myself and the caretaker will be keeping an eye out for, you know, trespassers. If you're pool and amphitheater parking lot. Okay, so we need parking for the people are going to be coming to the pool. So it's currently, and this is in over here in, in this area. So there's currently existing paved lot here that should really be resurfaced. And then there's a gravel lot below it, which is in this picture on the left. As you can see, there's erosion here that will need to be repaired. The area will need to be regraded and then new gravel put on top. I'll also keep him in mind that we'll, we'll have to be considering options for stormwater and sediment collection, which will be, yeah, which will be down here as the rainwater runs off. We don't want it just pouring over the hill and into this person's property here. So yeah, that's everything I, that's everything I have on that.
And I think, I think we've decided, you know, knowing that there are so many moving pieces, the goal for this year will, to be have, it will, to be opening this in a manageable way. It's not going to be paved and the best parking lot ever probably until next year, but we will have it accessible for Splash. Yes, those are the lights.
But those are the lights that were, and again, they're from shopping center.
Yeah.
They were used once, they had their way. They could possibly be repaired, good starting lights.
Right. Okay, so with this portion of the presentation, we kind of start to look, you'll be on summer of 2022. So previously we were looking at the White House, getting the caretakers in place, Deerfield's like maintenance contract, the tree removal, the street lighting, the, the parking lot and then that erosion repair. So this is beyond that. So here's a picture of a before picture of the amphitheater, I think it's taken like last summer. And in order for our engineers to get in and put together an accurate or put together accurate bid specifications for the work that would need to be done, Kenny's crew came in. I, I originally told him to give me a guy and a day to do it and I get it knocked out. But he used all the guys and the good portion of a week to clear everything here. So they, they did an amazing job and allowed our engineer to get in and take a look at what's going to need to be done with, with the concrete repairs, with railings, electrical work, lighting, and then ADA accessibility.
Have they given us any reports back or?
Not yet. So I think we, they came back to us with specific measurements for like railings and seat whiffs and aisles for the ADA accessibility. We provided that information, so we're waiting to hear back at this point. I, I would imagine we might hear something in the next month.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're, they're, Kenone's mid project on like three infrastructure projects for the park also. Yeah, but we did ask them to get like a ballpark number and so we, and a proposal for bid spec so that we know what we're working towards.
Yeah, and then also as a part of this project up, up here is where the restrooms are located. So it brought the amphitheater restroom. So we would need to go through, there's a lot of plumbing work, electrical, the fixtures need to be replaced, the roof needs to be replaced, tiles, flooring needs to be repaired. So we haven't started the, the process on getting a quote for that, but we will be doing that soon. Originally, when we were looking at this, we were thinking like porta potties until the bathrooms were up and running. But I understand there's been some questions about it so we can look into getting a realistic number and what that would cost and what the scope of work would be. So, yeah, so we have, so towards the end of the presentation, we do have, nah, no worries. Ramsey will talk about the water line and yeah.
So, so on the amphitheater, and of course I'll be the difficult one here.
No problem.
The amphitheater is probably one of the larger costs to incur to get it up and running. Safety standpoint for accessibility from Route seven with a large crowd like that, I have an overwhelming concern. Secondary concern for me is you are right between two very large units. They're going to impact that. So those, those are my concerns. I would, I would rather see a playground, walking trails until we have anybody. That's just me as one.
I kind of agree and here's the only reason why. There's like a moat around that. And it's kind of the one area that you probably can get people, keep people out of. Yeah, with barriers and.
Yeah, we have, we, well, we can get more into this as the phasing, like as we talk about the phasing and the discussion part. And I'm not trying to, um, but yeah, I mean, without, you know, one of our biggest concerns is accessibility to the site. Yeah. You know, so which I think.
Yeah, and I think with, with that in mind, with, if the pool is going to open up, we were looking at, all right, well, what's in the immediate vicinity of the pool that we can bring online? So we can minimize traffic throughout the entire park. We can kind of just focus it in one area. But again, this was, you know, a couple, a future, something in the future we were looking at.
Yeah.
Uh, okay, which brings us to kind of the last part of this presentation when it comes to what, what I'll be speaking about is the traditional picnic area. So it's over here in this part of the park. It was selected as a phase one site because it really wouldn't need, as it was one of the first things to open sewer or water. So that was a plus. We applied for grant funding and we did receive $250,000 from DCNR and $175,000 from DCED. And while some of you have read about this already, that, that money is going to be used to enhance the riparian buffer here, install some rain gardens, install, well, remove the hazardous playground equipment that is in place now and replace it with a nature based playground. We'll have ADA accessible walking trails and then we'll be refinishing this access drive and adding parking to access all these different areas. So it might be kind of hard to see, but this, this phase applies only to the area that's outlined by this dotted line here. So every, everything else is not included. So something that, that we would look at, and again, this is into the future as, as far out as 2024, 2025, we would try to align the renovations or potential partnerships with the old birdhouse building, the day camp building, the open air gymnasium, and what's also, or what was previously the Boy Scout building so that when we do the grand opening of this, we can kind of open this whole section. Was the, was the thought process.
I will say, so we received 375 in grant funding, but the total project cost in the grant was $1.8 million. So Mike is meeting with the DCNR rep. I don't think we've even talked to DCED yet to talk about modifications to the proposal to see what we can do, you know, to get something done with what we have and what we're going to match with. And Mike did mention that when he met with Beth from Cedarville, she was very confident that for opportunities. And Mike did mention that when he met with Beth from Cedarville, she was very confident that for opportunities for riparian buffer and stream bank restoration, that there's always grant funding available for that. So that might be a good cost to cut back on. So just want to mention that, but that's, and we have until 2025 to use that grant funding. So we do have time. So I guess if you don't mind, are you good? So with that, I just, you know, in speaking about St. Anthony's and looking at it and being the excitable, impulsive person that I am, you know, and knowing that Splash was on the horizon. I think I was full steam ahead and Mike and I have been looking at this a lot. And I would recommend, you know, I'll go through the focus coming up, but um, I don't see this park opening officially until 2024 or 2025. And I know that sounds pessimistic, but I think that, you know, seeing all of these safety hazards and understanding the state of affairs of what's there and what we're dealing with. We want to do this right. We want to be safe about it. And I'd rather be wrong and, and say that we're opening later and do all the right things and open earlier. But I really want to be honest with the residents, you know, this is a big opportunity, but it's, it's a lot to take on. And that's, you know, not just the feasibility of building all of this, it's managing this project along with locknair and funding it all. So, you know, I, I think I've come to that realization. So that's where we are. The good news is it gives us time to plan. So when we, you know, originally I thought if we're doing the pool, let's do the amphitheater. And we had actually put projected end dates in here and instead we're putting time estimates of how long it will take because again, one of our biggest issues, and we've been meeting with our traffic engineer and traffic committee. It's access to the property itself. And I know there's a couple of opportunities. But you know, when you look at the master plan, they didn't, there was no modification of the original existing entrance. There's two proposed fictitious entrances that don't exist. So we have to work with what we have. I did have a meeting last Thursday and McMahon had mentioned that there is an opportunity to grade on the route seven side to come in that would give a better site distance. That's a Penn dot road. And he said, he's never seen an improvement for less than a million dollars there. So, you know, I just want to be realistic about this. So that being said, that's, that's what he said. I don't know. But you know, Penn, that's also been generous with other things that will happen one day at Newark Road. But I think that being said, it gives us time to plan properly. I mean, I think for the pool, you can get in and out of there because I don't imagine hordes of people going at once. But for an amphitheater, that worries me. And so we are really hyper focused right now on infrastructure. There is no water to the park. It was all well water. Pinone is working on the scope. We did apply for the LSA grant and we asked for a million dollars towards the water line. And that's in here, isn't it? This is the phasing plan. So CWA is, they are willing to, well, theoretically they are in discussion about being willing to own and operate this as their own as long as we loop. Oh, thank you. As long as we loop from end to end to increase their access to residents. So the red line would be the phase one of the water line and to the bird's nest building and through the park, it would service the pool, but the pool is under the understanding that they are to revitalize the well. If they need water for their opening and that's on them. Sewer is another story because Aqua, you know, the south, the south plant is in need of repairs. And they said that it's not feasible right now, but possibly between two and five years. So we've included in the, we've included it in the scope of work because if the timing works out, we can do them both at once. But the capacity is not there. We are guaranteed five EDUs for the pool, which so they are on the sewer now. And that includes the amphitheater. So they will be fine with sewer. But, you know, I mean, that kind of slows things down because if you consider putting a beer garden here and renting that out as a venue, it's really hard to do, to market it without a restroom or without sewer and water. Yes. I believe so. And I, I don't want to speak for them because I haven't been too involved, but they've been working with the health department and they were aware that there is, there are, I think, two wells on site. Yeah, yeah. Yep. Yeah.
I think the county health will work with them and as long as they have a treatment plan in place. County health will certainly come out and do, and do random testing.
And actually the health department was really helpful in actually macheteing the way to the well. She was the woman from the health department was the one who knew where it was on the property. So she's been working with them on that. Um. So let's see.
Can you go back to that slide?
The water? This one or the original one?
That. So, so I don't claim to be a traffic engineer, however, as a kid, I probably was with my dad when that was a dump down there. So I've been around here. And I just heard you say a million dollars to do some grading to improve site.
I said that was a ballpark estimation, but that was something I forced them to give. Go south from there?
Yeah. Come down and access here.
We did talk to Penn dot about that and they did a site distance survey and they said that the site distance was actually worse from down there. Because we had talked about coming through the maintenance garage and up and in the lower portion, the second parcel, the southern parcel, even there. Um, again, everything I'm saying about traffic is theoretical, but you know, they're, they're coming up with options.
If you were to take and get rid of these trees here on this side and move this access down here and trim some trees here. I think you would end up with better site distance. Of course, I don't know. I just drive.
Again, and again, you know, this is all being discussed. So, but we did have a meeting with Penn dot about that. So we're working with the entrance that we have at this point and getting some feedback.
That was one of my suggestions. Problem is too much on the far side.
On, on the.
All on the T side for whole line. The problem is when graphics coming up. Trying to cut the end turn and see around the correct state that that's one of the reasons.
And there were also utility pools to be moved, which added to the cost.
I mean, it is, it is tough. So we as a board, we need to keep that in mind when that property, if it sells on the opposite side for development, possibly and work with anything that they put there. If they could rate it back. It's pretty steep there.
Again, access is going to be one of, aside from infrastructure access is one of issues. Yes.
So. So I think there's a couple of moving targets. So we have the white clay point, which also is adjacent to that side of St. Anthony's. There's multiple options there where they could come either out to 41. You're talking about wetlands again, could be another million dollars. And/or to create a road through their community to go out to Sunnydale and even bypass. That, that's possible. What you gotta do is look at a map from 30,000 feet. What those figures are, I mean, you know, every time you start talking about traffic, it's a million dollars.
Yeah.
It's a million dollars. It would be, you know, X amount of dollars to acquire an adjacent property there that the township has looked at, currently looking at. What are the best, what's the best option? Correct. And, and, and even though Splash would be high volume, I don't think everybody's going to leave like
Right.
An amphitheater when the concerts are. And effectively most of the, the high volume, which would be Splash and the amphitheater are on that eastern, eastern and south.
Nowhere.
Nowhere.
We can't talk, work.
Yeah.
There's too many safety, yeah. Until you see bid specs go out, I don't think there's no, it's, you can't even partially use it at this point.
Is, is the township going to run it? I say no. If that's what you're asking. There's been multiple people that are interested in that amphitheater.
Yeah. Yeah. Oh, yeah. We got to get to the amphitheater. Yeah. First.
If that helps.
Yeah, I think we're trying to take a really realistic approach. And that's why, you know, yes, there are other opportunities for entry to the park. But I'm, I personally am only going to suggest things that are accessible by us at this point. So plus I don't want to have another Zoom getting yelled at about the Reynolds Road property. Um. So just want to make sure. And then again, I just want to reiterate, while we are repairing the infrastructure and getting it ready, we really are looking at any opportunity to enhance environmental situations there, whether it's stream banks, riparian buffers. If there's MS four opportunities for us to get MS four credits, I think that should be something that we're proactively looking at. And in the meantime, coming up in the natural resource study, it did talk about an invasive species maintenance plan. And I think that's something that we need to consider as well. And then as we talk about, I think everybody has a copy of this map, which I will switch to screen sharing in a second. There's a map and it shows the different phases of the property and we put what the estimated costs are on it. But I think it's important to keep in mind, you know, this is a very big opportunity, not just for the township, but for township businesses and, and nonprofits. And so I think that there's a lot of opportunity here if we take our time to partner and collaborate with some different groups that might benefit from, you know, long-term, low cost leases for different, you know, like the day camp building. If we could maybe partner with, we had reached out to the YMCA, they couldn't, but maybe, you know, mighty writers or different local groups. If we could help fund some redevelopment that gets them in there where we're not on the hook for the total cost of the redevelopment. And let me switch this so I can put the map up. So this is our park phasing. And this is where I think it would be helpful to hear the board's input and okay, um. Looking at this, you know, we know the swimming pool is tentatively opening in 2022. We have through 2024 into 2025 for the traditional picnic area up here. I guess first I'd like to hear from the board what your priorities or hopes are for the different areas. Is there anything on here that really, you know, we did the township survey and I think that the highest priority from township residents was trails. But I'd be curious, I, I'd like to hear from you all as far as any of these phases, if they really jump out to you that we should be focusing on since.
So while, in my opinion, while we're waiting for all of this permits and all that, fun stuff to take place. Like there are swing sets, picnic cables that are dilapidated, you know, like there's a lot of like excavation that needs to take place that we could probably put out the bid. So it's not covered in on public work. And personally, I think that's probably the only thing we can do because this water line is really running, going to be running through here and anything that we do is going to get tore up.
Right. But I'm thinking, you know, if the water line goes in in conjunction with the picnic area and if we can get somebody that would be interested in either the boy scout building or the bird's nest building. It could all sort of timing wise end up being ready in 2025. You know, that's where my brain is headed. But then looking at this, you know, water based activities, 1.9 million. That seems to me to be like one of the lower priorities. I think, I think the pond is nice, but in this, you know, this doesn't acknowledge the fact that there's a sewer line and they had talked about putting the two ponds together. I think the pond should exist. I'm not saying we get rid of it, but I'm not saying that that would be, I don't know. I, I think that that would be something I would wait on and focus on the park hub mini golf maybe next, you know? And I, I was just curious what the board thinks, you know, there's that community events area for $2 million where there's pickleball and fire pits. What do you think?
My thought is what we get it was to start from the west. So we're going to need Splash is going to be going in regardless of what we do. So my first thought was to, to the amphitheater. Fix the amphitheater. So it's ready to go. It seems like it's not going to be in the way of any of these lines that's future. I'm still very supportive of buying the tear property and putting in a road finals because I don't want to have the future of this park be dependent on the niceties or kindness of whatever's going in at White Clay Point. So I want, you know, we're spending $20 million to rebuild this park. So I want the township to control its future as much as possible. So I would for it to ease as long as it's, since we've already hit out. We also look at the rinse and flash area. So, so the three parts would be the first section that I would do. Next, I would start again moving down the east. Water based activities, building parts. And I want to slowly kind of bring these things online and these kind of things that, you know, people will like. If people invested it, but without like drawing a huge shot of people. Because I think once the mini golf goes online, that destination playground, that's going to draw a lot of fans and everything. So if we can work on securing the areas that are already adjoining where we start the park. So if we can work on securing the areas that are already adjoining where we start the park. We're trying to work to bring people in. Indoor theater, not to get them on, gas and everything, because I heard they're reading on that, so you know, not overwhelming it. But really, it's about getting them to know that just where the best places, like, water gets in, that would, the water and the sewer would be in by the time we start moving out towards what we're in, water-based activities are. It's kind of keeping the vibes, but I don't foresee this being completely done.
I like that timeline. That seems manageable for me.
And I, I'm not far from what David, I absolutely agree that there has to be a second access on that western side. Where it, where it falls, whether we do that, whether we go to the Terra route, or whether we work with the developer in the land development phase, I mean, there has to be an access, because that's where the high volume is.
And I'm here.
It's important to use the township property, township money to buy it, so we could I know we've talked about, you know, with open space purchases, there's limits if you, you know, that money, and what you can then sell, at the very least, and what you can buy, buy that, put a road on the edge of it, and decide we don't want anything else to do with it. Sell it, but I guess that is very important to me personally, the township.
It would actually, that piece would be a nice addition to.
Yeah, so like, I think some people have mentioned putting some fields up there or something, which is open space, but, you know, that's a decision we can come to.
Right here would be, this is the, this is the Terra property right here. It's almost like a dumbbell shape, and that
In this area.
Yeah, and so that leads on to Reynolds Road. I think it's 40 acres.
And then possibly that whole parking lot could be accessed without having to drive through the entire park, where you're gonna have children playing, where you're gonna have dogs in a dog park.
But if we do that, what are they playing on? Where are they playing? They're playing at Splash if they have a membership. They're not walking on any trails, because there are none. Where are they playing, in the parking lot?
But eventually, they will be, as you develop the park.
Yeah, but eventually, I mean, in tandem with the, with acquiring the property, I do think the trails should be. I don't see that being a big deal if it gets tore up with the water.
The trails?
Yeah.
No, I think the only, the, the conversation that Mike and I were having was that if you have, you know, if we don't have that property, those, the southern portion here would likely be overflow parking. And so it would be hard to do trails in that area until we had extra parking for the amphitheater, because that would be where they would go down here in the southern, definitely the natural open space south. And so that's why it's like, you know, one thing really affects all the other things.
I'm supportive of also not spending all the money we have, but we have this money giving eight-tenths of a percent interest when interest, when inflation is 8%. So that money here is an ice cube melting, and so this is only gonna be expensive, and I'd rather, like, because you have to concede the amphitheater park is 3K. So, take it all, and sort of price your things as soon as you're prepared.
How would you feel, and I don't know townships that have, well, I'm sure townships have done this, but about doing a capital campaign for the amphitheater? You know, a lot of people are giving money to the airport for tax deductions, and I know that, you know, the Kennett Library did that with their theater, but would it be something that we could consider in doing some fundraising for, like, your name on a seat at the amphitheater to just help, you know, fund it in a more creative way? Yeah, you know, something, you get 10 free tickets for the summer, or
That's
There's, there's always opportunities for grants, and I think, I know I sound like a broken record, we just need to be smart about what we're doing, because DCNR, if we're, if we're using DCNR for this, we're not gonna get it for open space. And if we're gonna do it for this, we probably won't get it for Loch Ness. And so whatever we're doing, we just wanna be smart about it. But yeah, there's always grants. I mean, and, and well, no matter what we're doing, we will look for grant funding opportunities. I, and I'm, I've gotten, I'm not above begging at this point, so I'm just straight up asking people for money, but, um, yeah. Another thing that I would just, I would like to get a read on from the board would be maybe doing an RFP for the, what we're calling the Bird's Nest Building, which is, if, does everybody know what I'm talking about when we say the Bird's Nest Building? So when you come up towards this traditional picnic area, there's a building right here. It's got a funny little, like, covered patio next to it, but they call that the Bird's Nest Building, and I think it was a day camp building as well. But if we did an RFP for a nonprofit that might be willing to do some capital fundraising and get their own grant funding, if we gave them a long-term lease, as long as they provided some sort of scholarship fund, you know, programming, or did some sort of required programming in their lease, would that be something the board would be interested in considering? Where they, they fix up the building, similar to Splash, but then they get it for 20 years, as long as they provide 20 scholarships a year, or certain programming that we're interested in providing?
If there's someone interested, I would agree with it. I think that building is a two-story building, it has very limited access. Currently, I think there's not any windows that are intact.
Right.
I mean, it needs a lot of money. It, it may be cheaper just to raise it to the ground.
It would be depressing. I know Chris and Mike went over there, and I, I don't think it's in as bad, I mean, I don't think it's in great shape. But again, there might be a nonprofit out there that needs space that, that could utilize it. Right. Yeah, it's got a very long cord. Actually, if you guys wanna keep it over there, you can just turn it on and off.
So, can you hear me?
Yes.
Am I here? Okay. So, so just building on Ann's point, this is Stan Lukoff, by the way, for folks on Zoom, and for Ted, I don't think we've met officially. I think the importance of having a design standard for the park is really important. Case in point, what Splash has done up there with their painting scheme, painting the Avondale beautiful stone. So I, I think, I think some type of design standard needs to be established as part of the vision, vision for the park. The, the other thing I wanted to bring up as part of the presentation, if now's a good time to do this, just some public comments, is around a watershed plan. And Mike, you know, this is near and dear to my heart. I think before we look at each of these pieces piecemeal, we should be addressing the watershed plan from a holistic standpoint, because if we don't do that, you develop one area, and that may cause issues in another area. And if we do a watershed plan holistically, just almost like an environmental impact statement, but from a watershed standpoint, that will really go along to addressing a lot of the problems that exist today, like that 18-foot ravine off, you know, Limestone Road. The other point I wanted to bring up was around lighting, and Ramsey, and I know Chris is on the, the call, dark sky compliant lighting is near and dear to my heart, so I wanna make sure the lights that get put in, whether through Pico or other means, are in fact truly, not only the bowls, but the fixtures are dark sky compliant, meaning that the light points down, they don't go into the sky, because a lot of neighborhoods are, are, are in the area, and a lot of people love looking at stars. Chris, I know you're a stargazer. So, those are really the main points I wanted to make. Also, as far as parking, we talked about parking by the, the pool. I think we should really consider as much pervious parking as possible, meaning the water can go through the parking areas, not just paving over it. So I think that's really important, and we talked about a little bit in the, the YSM study. So I think those were the main points. Ann, did you want to say anything else?
In my, in my opinion, anything that we do that's going to get anyone in there, Splash opening, you're gonna have more and more people. Until, until we figure out where these hazards are, I mean, you can block it off all you want, there's gonna be a kid in the well somewhere, so.
Oh, I, I agree. I mean, looking at the pictures and just
Like the first thing, and that is everywhere, right?
I mean, and that's, that's why I wanna be very clear, like, this park is not open.
Right.
It's not open. I know I sound rude every time I write a Friday update about catching the kid on the ATV, but I will catch that kid, or a well will, you know, like. And I've told the police, we're not messing around. If you're trespassing, I want you prosecuted at this point, because it's, I don't want anyone hurt. And it, you know, Mike was over there today, and there were kids fishing, and, you know, and we have in, what, the fall, during hunting season, there's guys hunting nearby and in that park to keep the deer population down. It's not accessible. And as, and it, it's sad to say, but I really, I, I don't think, it can't, it can't open. And this year, I mean, it's gonna open for Splash, and that is what it is, and, you know, I kind of regret pushing that forward as I did, but I would say 2024, 2025 is a ballpark, and that's on a good day. And I would really encourage everyone here to spread the word. I'd like to post this recording later, just to share it, but, um, you know, we have a great opportunity here, but we really gotta, we have to bide our time and do it the right way. And I agree with everything that you're saying about the environmental stuff. Stan, you'll be, I was talking about pervious paving at the parking lot an hour before this, so, but I agree with you. I mean, it gets worse.
It's not gonna work unless we get a clean slate.
Yep.
And, all right, so when I was just driving through there, a couple of hours now, you first come around right before you get to the mini golf.
Yes.
There's that little octagon, I don't know.
Oh, that weird murder pavilion?
They're not in the plans, like, we're not
It's, it was that one with the weird understory thing, that was sort of up in the air. That's pretty much a wetland over there. So my suggestion would be to take that down and just let it be a wetland.
Can we make a list of things that we want to take down and clear out? Do we even do that today, or? And then start getting quotes for excavating that? And while we're figuring out the rest of this stuff, at least we're in a clean.
So, yeah, I think while we consider the infrastructure improvements, you know, the water, the sewer, that should be our, our main focus, is safety hazards, site reclamation, getting all of the stuff that we don't want there. And then we did secure all of the buildings, so the Yes, I think that should be the focus, is taking down the pavilion. You know, they took down the aviary that's not being used. The other thing is, we haven't really experienced what the park organically lives like. So, you know, there was, in this picnic area on the grant, it's swam planned where the, the playground was put, because people weren't on site. So we really, I would rather that we get a real feel for the property and build it sort of as the property speaks to us, you know, kind of do what we do to developers, and, and find the natural resources, protect those, and then build the plan around that.
I mean, it's just gonna take a minute to get a road, so, purchase.
Yeah.
Property access, even down here where the fields were, where you're saying overflow parking.
Those flood. Right.
But it's wet.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
I, my personal opinion is it's, it would be incredibly expensive for the township to have to, to do all of the improvements. And we had somebody who was willing to make the investment in the infrastructure right then and there, so they were going to turn one of the biggest money pits around
Yeah.
for us. So I felt like that was
And even the operations and maintenance, I worked in the city of Redding, and we managed Legel Pool, and it was, you know, just every day. It wasn't like, oh, you need a new chair. It was like, oh, there's a crack, and it's gonna cost you $10,000. So we did dodge a bullet with that. Even fixing the site to make it not a pool would have cost a ton of money also. So, yeah, it was. What? Oh, yeah. Mike did it.
What did you do?
Yeah.
You want me out? Yeah, you can. Okay. I think my, my gut feeling is the very, very first thing we gotta focus on is, oh, God, excellent, is is the entrance. Because this is, this is gonna be, this is gonna be in business in less than 18 months. So my question to you, and probably to Kenny, is, is there something PennDOT can do to put blinkers on this thing, like flashers?
We did request a flashing light. I, I forgot what, we have been speaking with PennDOT, which
It seems like, it seems like small money to put a lot of safety in there. People are like, whoa, slow down. And also, it's beginning to educate the passing public. Something's coming. It's
Yeah.
Something's, things, I forget the song, but something great's coming. Slow down and anticipate. So. The other one is, I quickly thought is that maybe over the course of the 18 months, we're gonna have a full kiosk here of educating people who come here about the progress of the, of the, of St. Anthony's, that, the phases. I mean, it's a good area for people to park and just look at this signage.
I don't want people to go there.
No, but when this is open, people will have to.
For the pool. And that was, just to mention, we did talk to Splash, I think John's on here, but I'm not, I don't wanna speak for them, but I did ask them if they would consider putting something, and this was Brianna, who lives in the caretaker's house, if they would put something in their membership that says that your status is only, you know, like, the park is only open for pool access, and you, if you violate that, you will lose your membership. And you, if you violate that, you will lose your membership. Because we really want to be clear that and hopefully they'll go along with that. But that was a suggestion.
Excellent. Because this is the first impression we all get is the entrance. And we got to feel safe and we got to feel inviting.
Door point. The excavating that we're kind of talking about from that entrance to Splash. Needing none of immediate attention, especially possibly opening this summer. So. Between the entrance and Splash, what buildings would need to go? And not buildings, that is structures.
I think it would just be that pavilion. There's not, the aviary is down and then.
But it's not all the way. It's not nearly down. And I'm just thinking with one big swoop, we could probably hire somebody versus doing this. Get like a bulk, bulk dismount or something.
Right.
Like where they're cleaning up more of it all at once instead of the piecemeal. With a focus and emphasis between the entrance and Splash. And then working outwards. If that would be like a nine month one if they're opening.
Like, is that something you can look at and sort of tag and give us some sort of diagram or pictures?
Without a doubt, when those gates are open, there will be kids playing on the lead paint swings back.
Yeah.
What signs up, keep out? I was the kid on the other side of the keep out.
What's in there?
Now you're in charge.
What's in there?
So, so one other point I wanted to make, this is Stan again, that I was part of the study team, as was some of the other folks in the audience. And, you know, a lot of work was put into coming up with the potential uses and price tags and all that. And I would say just because it's been proposed on the plan, doesn't mean that it has to be done by the township. And, and I think the township should, as soon as possible, really kind of think about a vision for the park. There's, there's nothing wrong with passive areas of recreation in the park, more natural. For example, the lower area where it's marked for a fitness trail. I mean, that, that really could be a flood plain or, you know, wetlands area. So that's what I'm saying by, by looking at this holistically from a watershed standpoint, that lower area, the teen fitness and so on, and then natural open space, I believe should stay open space. And again, could be used as part of the stormwater remediation plan. So again, I mean, a lot of this build out is very pricey. I don't know where all the money's coming from. And, and I think targeted projects are great. And I think, I think the supervisors need to consider them judiciously. And also with, you know, considerations of safety and access and all that, which I think you're doing. So again, I appreciate having this meeting and the opportunity to speak. So thank, thank you guys for that.
Yeah, that's right. It's, it's on here.
Yeah. So there's two, there's two areas. There's the natural open space, south and north. The south is 742 and the north is 648. And then if you look in, I mean, there's trails kind of weaved throughout all of these cost opinions. Also, so. That's just those two areas. Yeah. So that's on here. Do you have one of these? Did I give you one of these? I don't know. Are you talking about a paved trail or batuminous or, you know? The other thing you have to keep in mind is accessibility. So some, you know, if we build a trail, are we, what's the grading? Is it accessible? You know, it really depends. So, yeah, it's hard to answer that. I will say, I don't know, the total cost of improvements from this plan, just so everyone knows the number, was $16,622,231. I took the pool out. I took the pool out because we're not paying for that. So that's not in here. Oh, yeah, I did read. Yes. Yes.
So I'll speak a little bit to that. My thoughts on David. I think we've talked a little bit. That would be the interest in the township acquiring the rest of the lands there. Then you would have everything from Sunny Del Road, 41 and Route 7 in that box that runs out to Ronald Road would be in the control of the township. And you need to look at that clearly from stormwater, from traffic impact, from accessibility. And we want to get it right. And is it worth buying the rest of that property and just planning that stage of the township for years to come? I think it is. Yes. And, and we also have to look at the development that's going to occur upstream from White Play Point as to what impact that is going to, is it going to increase? That culvert that we replaced could. There's a lot of things here that you've really got to. Be, be the guy that doesn't agree with that. That's me. That they're not really that visible, but there's, there's. The free property is, is three of five that were. The other two. I guess they're for sale. Off of Reynolds Road. And then there's the houses up front of some of them. They're there. They're existing homes. So they're, they're already developed. I'm just talking. Correct. Open, open lands that have the potential for. And you could actually go and calculate. I mean, Barkley's not here with us, but he would tell you that over that 202, what an inch of rain, how many gallons of stormwater you would get off of that acre. And you could back into that 137 that we owned, the 10 on the Terra and the 87 on the side of the Prius. Figure out what a one-inch storm would be. Before it hits Somerset.
Can you hear me now? Yeah. Okay. This is pedestrian access. And this is all Somerset here and Harrogate here. So my question is, the folks who live here, in the next five, six years, when can they access it by foot coming up here? It's something else we should.
Five or six years.
Yeah, I know, but.
Not till the park's open.
Correct.
Yeah.
But this has got to, we have to keep this in mind as well. Because this is, this is people on bike and walking, not vehicle. And this is, this is really tempting to just walk with bike along the pond here, the lake, and then park here and just walk around a bike. So I think that's, that's a big, big amenity that's low cost for us. So.
I feel like it's not much you can do for us to be able to enjoy on what's the hazards over there, right? And it's low cost and tracing this water line around, it's not really impacted.
Right.
Right?
No, I, I agree. I think we, you know, we want people to be able to access as much by foot as possible, especially with the entrance car wise. But, um. Come? Yeah. Yep.
Yeah. And the other thing to Ann's point is, you know, there, there's a potential on the free property. Currently, we have a plan that is somewhat compliant with the ordinance prior to us making amendments for an additional 330 homes. Times, times four or five people in residence. So it's, we have to really be cautious and think this. Yes.
I think the goal, you said to the, to Splash, the goal would be to come. Yeah. So this, I mean, this is definitely narrow and hopefully accessible. But I, the intention theoretically is to make this one way in, come through here and then back out this way, I think, is what we said, right, Kenny?
Yes.
Yeah. So they would only really, so that way nobody's ever really crossing. And the only tight spots would be this area here because they would come in one and out the other. Yeah.
Yeah. You had a question? Yes. Yeah. And you have a nice trail system through your community. I think there should also be a discussion how that can tie into St. Anthony's. Correct. You can see down through the valley and across to the other side.
Can you tell me your names? Okay. Thank you. Go on.
So I would like to think that the majority of this will be ADA compliant. I know something like the amphitheater, they, the ADA requirements would require us to have handicap seats, but they would be at the very top of the amphitheater or potentially in the bottom. I mean, it's. So. I would say on the trails, if they're going to be paved, there should be portions that would be accessible. I don't see how, and even when you think of the parking lot and it being gravel, if you're in a wheelchair, that's almost impossible. So there has to be some consideration even for the pool to have blacktop spaces with the blue placards for handicap.
Yeah, I think there, there is existing handicap parking right at the top of the amphitheater that would be dedicated for that purpose. Right.
Correct.
Right. Yes. I'm, I don't think we would plan a ADA compliant trail that wouldn't be accessible to ADA.
It should, it should have parking spaces adjacent to the, to the trailhead. I would say portions should, should allow, should be blacktop. But even here in these trails that are blacktop, it's a huge concern with some of the grade elevations. They're not the 3% ADA compliant. No, but when you start putting trails on steep slopes, you better blacktop these.
Yeah. I think you bring up a good point and I think that that's something that the board would definitely keep, you know, at the forefront throughout the planning process. We want to make, I mean, everything I know of the board is that we want to make everything accessible for as many people as possible. And I think you bring up a good point that we'll continue to plan for. Yeah, there's a couple in there that are paved and I think there's a few that are ADA compliant. But I, again, I don't speak, I don't pretend to know all of the legalities of what is technically ADA compliant. So I don't want to say, you know, certain ones are wheelchair accessible when they're not. I don't know that. Right. Right.
So to Stan's point, we want to get to a place where we have sort of like a strategic plan for what we think should be implemented, what should not be implemented, right? I mean, what are the next steps here, like besides?
Well, I think that we should. As far as like getting stuff out of there. I think we should get items out of there. I think that the, there's some, not low hanging fruit, but things that are in motion already. I think personally, like the community events area and the teen fitness areas are like, you could, I'll be retired by the time those things are done.
What is the, what is this community events area? I feel like this whole park is a community event area.
It's very cool in concept. There's, you know, there's a sledding hill over here. There's pickleball courts. There's more event space. I think that the suggestion was that it was for more, like older people that would prefer less inclined walking. Why can't I think of not steep walking, flatter trails? My brain stopped working. Sorry.
So I think, Mike, is that something that you can do? Is to go and just give us a list of assessing some of the structures that are not needed. And I think it would be the board's responsibility to go out and take a look at those structures that you've identified and then get back to you and say, okay, 18, let's put them out to bid. Let's get it. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I think too many go off as something that we could.
A good one.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would, I would encourage that. I think interns do a wonderful job. We, we use them at Cato and basically we give them a stipend for a portion of their tuition to do projects.
There was like a natural resource list, but
So, so part of these are identified in the master plan, but not specific. It's just the natural resources and things of that.
We'd and we, we do do a lot of this with our engineer already. Kenny utilizes the GIS software, I think, pretty religiously, so this could be another layer of it that I think that we could look into, but yeah, it should be part of our inventory. Thank you. David, were you going to say something?
Yeah, I just wanted to add, when you're going out, Mike, there should be about thousands of stations across various locations. The store commission and ask, we could collect those in one area for storage, because the business at some point to have this little oil or area where we celebrate the festival.
Do you know what they are? What is a station of, like, is it a? Yeah, I, I know, but like, is it like across or is it like, okay? Okay. I do know somebody did pilfer a few items as they were cleaning the property.
So whatever you buy, just, secondly, something I don't think, we talked about it privately, but we haven't mentioned, thinking about changing the name of the park as we go, just people, we kind of think this long, because I think it'll be something to think about as we go, rebranding, you know? Get three years on the line calling and saying you have to even switch.
I agree.
People wants to think about that, how they
Yeah. What about the hills?
How about the money pit?
Oh my God.
No truer words.
Yeah, there was tail and mine in the air, something like that.
Tail and plate, that's right.
Yeah, right, so like a lot of the water that you say, or old tail and mines. Because I think we want to, you know, we're kind of redoing the whole park, you know? There's a good basis here, but I think we want to kind of develop our own future park. Now, we've seen Anthony's for a long time, that long time is only 60, you think about the whole history of your garden since, what, 1714? Quite effective history, you know? And obviously, that's why I think it is a good, I think, a proportion of the heritage of the history.
You could take it with you, it's got a cord.
Just as a little Can you hear me? It's a little footnote to that point about history. I became familiar with this camp from Easter, Easter service, sunrise service here, Father Virgilcelli. And as you described earlier, there was just a long line, like 41 in the morning, in the evening, so headlights coming in and out here. But it was super early, so there wasn't any traffic issue coming on seven. Up here is a little grotto in the hillside that the parish dedicated to, I guess it was to, well, I call it Lady Guadalupe. And the reason I bring that up is that would be a great spot to recognize and, and respect the Hispanic community, because the Lady Guadalupe is very, very, very endearing to that community. So I like just to register that piece of history and also to, to to kind of pull in that culture of our township now, so it's 25% of our, of our people. And just do that, so I just wanted to pick up, I just want to pick up on Dave's point. No, it's not, it's up here in this lovely little spot that's being developed. It's someplace up here. It's, it's, it's very humble. It's kind of a back wall, the statue's not there, but it's, it's a meditation spot. Basically, so anyway.
If it, yeah, it would be gone if it was easy, for sure.
Without
Yeah.
Killing
She lives there now. That's her home. I think a lot of the side streets will have blocked up off with jersey barriers, so they're not accessible by car, but it's going to require, you know, coordination between staff and police and the Splash owners and directors as well, you know? And we do have, I mean, the caretakers on site are very diligent about keeping an eye on the place, so
I just got yelled at.
Chris, you got yelled at earlier today.
Today.
And then a lot of it'll just be us discussing it publicly and scaring people. Yeah. I do think it would also be worthwhile that we have a couple of open houses, you know, so we have, like we did before, where people can see what the park looks like and, you know, so the curious people have an opportunity to see the park, you know, safely. I like that idea. I hear they have a good restaurant, so
Yes, but hopefully they will be successful and be able to give back to our
Yeah, and they, I think though, they seemed willing, when we discussed it, to, you know, reiterate that sentiment to their members that the parks only open for the pool. We have not collaborated on any of the advertising, so anything that Splash has released has been on their own. So I would recommend, yeah, that, that's up to them. I have, I haven't seen and that's something they'll have to bring to us, yeah. We haven't coordinated that at all. Yeah, I just, again, I want to reiterate though, like, they have, they're they're, they are Splash and, you know, well, we're checking in with them as far as the building process goes, but just to be clear, we have not, they haven't released anything under our authority, you know? I haven't, I haven't seen anything that's been released aside from Facebook posts. I can only comment on the building permit, I don't even, yeah, I haven't seen anything, I know they're very I think, like I said, I think John McKenzie might be on here, but I would just say, if you have questions about memberships, definitely reach out to them, but we will be talking to them now that the permit process is moving forward.
I mean, and I would also just be patient with them, it's a big undertaking, what they're doing, and, I mean, huge investment that they're making to help us with the park, so
Yeah. It's a lot, it's a lot, a lot, and I don't think they knew how a lot it was until, you know, they got in there.
So if you saw marketing from like last year, when maybe they, they thought they were going to open, I would say like, just wait until you see new marketing, you know, because now I think they have a better understanding of what's
Yeah, they do seem tenacious. Does anybody have anything else? I appreciate this conversation, I think this was helpful. Before we close, is everybody here comfortable? This has been recorded, is everybody comfortable that I post this video so that people that weren't able to attend might be able to watch it? Does anyone, is everyone okay with that?
I have no problem.
Is that okay? Okay, I just feel like we're going to have a lot of questions. And Chris got a lot of steps in using that microphone, it should be worth it.
Steps, what do you, what do you guys want to do?
I think that we should plan a, an open house for the summer. I think that we will, I think we're going to have to keep you updated on some of the bidding and grant processes as they move forward.
Do you want for the strategic vision, right? I, I'm just trying to think the easiest way to do this, and I don't know if we need to build Christmas involved, see like the legalities of this with Sunshine, but do we want to break off each one of these projects and each one of the board members prioritize where they fall or mix?
Why don't you each do that and bring it back, and then we collaborate and see if you guys all line up?
That's right, like a story.
Yeah. Yeah, just tell us what's important to you, and I think in the meantime, Mike and I can come up with a, a few ideas. I think this What was that?
That was, is this Ramsey, it's John McKenzie?
Hi.
Hey, real quick, so I am, well, I'm away, I'm out of town, I'm currently on vacation with my family, but I've been listening on and off. So we can give you guys a full update, like after I get back on, I get back Thursday. I know that I'm sure there's a lot of questions, but, you know, we got the permits Friday, as I'm sure everyone's aware, right? So now we're going to have construction meetings to figure out, you know, what we could do and what's feasible as far as Splash and the park. So I just wanted to quickly, you know, let everyone know that now that we have permits in hand, we will figure out what we could do, we'll go over some of the things, we'll probably talk with you guys as a township and figure out, you know, what's, what's feasible and expectations.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
So if you guys want to rate that, I think at the next Board of Supervisors meeting, depending on the melee, we can give a little update and, and, you know, we'll continue to update moving for, I don't know what I'm trying to say here, and then we should probably do a meeting like this every few months.
And quotes on, and, and an assessment of the building.
Okay. Sure, yeah, of course. I did have one quick question, so in the master plan, since half of our master planning group is here, in the master plan, they talked about taking down the green room building, which is at the bottom of the amphitheater. But Chris and Mike went in it, and it isn't that bad and could be redeveloped as a possible green room later. Is everybody comfortable? I don't, leaving that off of the excavation list for now.
I mean, I would even say if we want to leave, what buildings need to be, you said they were all okay.
Yeah, aside from that one, that was the one, it's not even mentioned on this map, because they had talked about how bad it was, but I don't think it's that bad. Everything, all the locks have been changed, the buildings are secure, yeah. Yeah.
To God knows where.
Yeah.
So I mean, I, I'm thinking for the excavation, it's more like the holes.
Yeah. Weird pavilions with
Trees.
chambers underneath.
Factor in those trees, but you guys were going to have to
Yeah.
Go back and do, maybe we, we don't have to do that now, hopefully, we can get that all included in the quote.
Yeah, I think if you, if we let Mike focus on getting to and from the pool safely, then we can, you know, go from there. But I think that, that time's going fast. Yeah, oh, I got you, pull those out, yeah. Cool.
Well, that's, that's at least, hopefully gets that started.
Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion before we adjourn?
Yeah, I think, I mean, I, I would really think that right now, now that we kind of have marching orders for the pool, if we can focus on that, we'll come up at the next, in the near future, we'll come up with a couple of open house dates for the summer. And then as things progress, we can come up with another update, a St. Anthony's update meeting, a workshop.
On what?
Yeah, like, I, yeah, I, that's definitely on our mind, but I think right now I just want to focus on getting to and from the pool, and then we'll go from there, but yeah. Yeah, safety hazards and all of that. Thank you all.